Good evening and welcome to the Brockton School Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 17, 7:00 p.m. We are located at the Brockton High School at the George Rahm Little Theater here at 470 Forest Ave. In Brockton. Dear visitors, welcome to the meeting of the Brockton School Committee. This is the agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note that hearing of visitors is included. If you have a statement or question, please give your name to the secretary. We have a few individuals. In addition to attending this meeting, the public can view this meeting via television, Comcast, Channel 8, 107.1 HD version, and online via this link, I will call this meeting to order by establishing a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Superintendent Tigliani, myself, turn around, you're the vice chair. And we do have Representative Oliver Via Team's. Mrs. Oliver? Mrs. Oliver? Received. And Mr. Vega is just running a few minutes late. I will call this meeting to order by if we can all stand and salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pursuant to the school committee policy, each person requesting to speak shall be allotted the maximum of three minutes. Since the period is limited to 15, a total of five people shall be permitted to speak on a first-come-first basis. And our first speaker is Miranda Davids.
Sorry, I'm short. Good evening. My name is Miranda Davids. I have two children who will be attending Brockton High School, one is a freshman and one who is a junior. Both are part of the marching band. My daughter is in the advanced band in the wind ensemble, and my son will be joining the concert band. I am also the vice president of the band boosters. I am here as I am concerned with the current state of the instrumental music program, as many of you are aware of this, as several band parents and students have spoken to you before. If you're not aware, at the elementary level, lessons were moved to before school and are only open to fifth graders. That limits many families despite having provided transportation. That also puts students back an entire year in their learning in instrument. At the middle school level, beginning an instrument is not an option, given the limited staffing in the instrumental music department and their current schedule. These teachers teach at multiple schools and are doing an outstanding job within the limitations they've been given. Before COVID, 450 kids were in band in fifth grade. It had dropped to around 200. This year, students going from fifth grade to sixth grade will be around 90, and some will end up at the charter schools. For example, at North, only eight students will be joining the band, with a total of 20 band students. Several instrumental sections will be empty. I also have pictures of Plough in January 2020, where you will see there is an entire full audience and a full band. And then this current year, there were seven band members and a very small audience. I know many of you are proud of our band and occasionally attend concerts. I've seen some of you at football games, and you make a point to watch the halftime show. In just a few years, the marching band numbers will be halved. It will affect our town parades and, excuse me, and the competitions they attend where they are bringing home gold. We do appreciate your support as a body, but these concerns that we have brought to you for the past couple of years, we have not seen progress. I'm hoping that this matter can be looked into and addressed, as it has been said by members of the community, and also of the school committee, that the band is the pride of the city of Brockton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Susie.
Hi, my name is Nancy Susie. I'd like to comment on her first. My grandson took band up in sixth grade at North Middle School, and now he's applying for the advanced band. So I think sixth grade is a good time for kids to join the band. Now for North Middle School dress code, I think there should be a dress code. All these kids go to school dressed the way they feel like dressing. You know, girls dress the way they do, boys dress the way they do, with holes in their pants, you know? And I think the dress code would be great. Allison Ramsey wants khaki pants, purple shirts with North Middle School written on it. I think that's a great idea. Nathan went to George School. He had his khaki pants and blue shirt. He did that for fifth grade. My other two grandkids, Nicholas and Nolan, went to Raymond School, wore the khaki pants and red shirts like everybody else did. I think the dress code would be the best thing ever for kids. Thank you. Drinks for everybody after this.
Appreciate it, thank you. Moving on to our agenda, we will go to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Tigliani. The floor is yours. Before that, can we just reflect that Representative Vega is in attendance, 707. Thank you.
My bad.
No apology, sir.
All right. Well, as usual, I have a very exciting update for us this evening, but I'm getting the feeling that maybe some folks here would like to hear about the North uniform policy. So I feel like we'll go ahead and start with the North uniform policy first, and then I'll do my update after.
Good evening. My name is Allison Ramsey. I'm the principal over at North. You'll find a purple folder at your seat with all of the documents that I'll be referring to, along with the slides from the PowerPoint. So the purpose for me to come to visit with you today is to seek approval for a student uniform pilot program at North Middle School in grades six to eight for the 2025-2026 school At North, we are working very hard on promoting a school culture of belonging rooted in our North Middle School pledge that we recite every day, to be respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. At North, and you might have seen us in the news, we have been working really hard at creating an inclusive and focused school environment all about equity. And if you've seen us recently, we just published our multicultural cuisine cookbook to create belonging and to make sure everyone has a voice at North. Also, this proposal is in response to strong stakeholder support for the uniform initiative. A little bit of background about our research with North and our uniform pilot. So I was the principal at North in 2017, and then I went to the Brookfield, and I was the principal there for about five years. And in August of 2022, I returned back to North. And when I had the first open house, I had many incoming sixth-grade parents whose students and their children went to the Raymond and the George. And they would say to me, "Ms. Ramsey, do you have a uniform policy at North?" And I would say, "No, I'm sorry, we don't." And they said, "Okay, well, is that something that you would consider?" And I said, "Well, based on stakeholder feedback, we could talk about it." So based on those conversations, in November 2022, I proposed the idea of a student uniform policy to the families at North through our school improvement council meetings. And based on their feedback, it was very positive, we created the family-student uniform surveys for all of our families in their native languages. And you will find that on the left-hand side of your folder, all the different surveys. So we have been collecting family feedback for the past three years. And anytime we have a family engagement night, our surveys are always out, and we're always looking for feedback from families based on what they think is best for their family and their child. So based upon that information, I'm here to present to you. So I wanted to just give you a little bit of background of where this came from. So as you know, research shows that student uniforms help students focus on learning and reduce distractions. Student uniforms promote a culture of belonging and reduce peer pressure, minimize visible economic differences among students, lower family expenses related to school attire. I've had many questions about, well, how much will this cost families? So on average, it's about $90 per child per year. And in your packet, on the right-hand side, you'll find all of the prices for various uniforms. We have, based on my collaboration with my colleagues from the elementary and the high school who already use student uniforms, this information is from the same vendor, Play It Again Sports. So I researched which vendor all the uniforms come from right now in Brockton, and these are the prices from that vendor. And one other thing I'd like to point out is creating vertical alignment with the one high school currently in BPS where students wear uniforms and the three elementary schools where students wear uniforms. So currently, if a family in Brockton wants their child to wear a uniform and they're in the middle school ages, there's no place right now for that. So that would help and promote some vertical alignment. So as I previously mentioned, I have collaborated a lot with my colleagues to figure out how they have implemented student uniforms in the past and what things really worked for them and what things didn't. And when I was speaking with Dr. Silva, who is in charge of the Promise High School, she said, "Well, funny that you mention that, because one of the interview questions that I ask all incoming ninth graders is, why do you think a principal would want to implement a uniform policy?" So I have given you some of the quotes that she directly had from this last incoming group of ninth graders. One of the big things that resonated with me, and sometimes we don't always think of it, is the second bullet point down, where they said, "To make sure we are safe and to distinguish between students that are supposed to be here and students that are not supposed to be here." So that was really interesting to me, because a long time ago in the middle school, the students would wear IDs, like how they do at the high school, but we've gone away from that. So really, other than knowing each child by face when they come in, we don't have a way to distinguish who's supposed to be in the building and who is not. So I thought that was an important point that the students actually brought up. So as I mentioned, we have been collecting data from families based on surveys. And from 2023 to 2025, the winter, we worked on, it was just constantly having the surveys out, and whenever the parents came to dismiss their child, we would collect a survey. So it was ongoing. And when I discussed with Dr. Tahiliani about how to move forward with maybe getting your approval for a uniform policy at North, she said, "Get some more recent data," even though, you know, we had been collecting for a few years, "but let's get some really current, concrete data." So we did. Spring 2025, March 13, we had our family conferences, and we specifically surveyed families of students who would be incoming to North. So not eighth-grade families that are leaving us to go to the high school. We surveyed families that would still be at North next year, and 94% of our families were in support of a student uniform pilot at North for next year. As you can see through time, the support has grown. So let's talk a little bit about what this proposed uniform policy might be. So as you know, the George has navy blue polos, the Raymond has red polos. But for us at North, our colors are purple. So I am modeling one of a sample purple polo. Some people, purple is not their color. So because we always want to give everybody choices, we have created gray, so they could wear purple or gray. And as you know, some students don't like certain textures, and these polos have like, you know, a little bit of texture on them. So we've also created some t-shirts with the insignias as well to give different choices for families. So the bottoms could be either khaki tan or black, depending on their preference, and all of those bottoms can be purchased at Walmart, Amazon, Target, Old Navy, and Children's Place. There's many places to purchase those. So in speaking with my colleagues, they had mentioned that when they first started their uniform pilot at their school, they said just, so for us, it would be purple or gray tops. So they didn't require the logo. So I said, "How did that work?" They said, "It was great." So for us at North, I would replicate what my colleagues had done. If the family wanted to purchase the shirts with the logos, that's great. If not, they don't have to, and they can purchase the uniform tops at all the same places that they could purchase the bottoms. So, I want to go back one slide. If this was accepted by you tonight, and if you approve this, we are ready to go. We want to make sure families that are incoming to North have as much time as possible to learn and get information about what our proposal is at North. So if this is approved, and this is all based on your feedback, we are looking to have a fashion show on the 25th, which is next week, from 5:00 to 6:00 at North. And in your packet, you will find a draft letter that, if this is approved, I plan on sending out to families tomorrow for our incoming grade six students, so that they have enough time to prepare for the fashion show. Also, for any families that we might have missed in June, we're going to have the same type of fashion show at our August open house. At this time, the vendor from Play It Again Sports would be at North, so that all the children could try on various items to see which size they would be. In your packet, you will find the catalog for the different items that they are proposing with the prices, along with the complete price list. And this is some samples of the students wearing the uniforms. And as you can see, there are many different combinations they can wear, so they have plenty of autonomy. Also, you'll notice that they can show autonomy in many creative ways, and you can see the child on the left is showing her autonomy with her cool pink socks. So how will we fund these student uniforms, you might ask? So as I mentioned before, our multicultural cookbook, the proceeds that we receive from that, we will use for families that might need help with funding. Our McKinne Vento and foster care students will have their uniforms fully funded. Title I will also assist with some uniforms for other students in need. I have contacted our city grants manager, and if this is approved, she's all on board for helping me look for grants that will help provide student uniforms for families to help us create a type of closet for our students, say, you know, their laundry doesn't get washed that day. Well, we'll have extra uniforms that they can have. So we're looking to find some grants for that. So what are our next steps? So tonight, I'm requesting and asking for your feedback about the approval of this pilot. My thought is we would try it the first year, and we would suggest that students wear the uniforms. It wouldn't be mandated the first year. We would suggest it. If there were families that weren't on board, that would give us time to speak to them to try to figure out what the best ways would be to accommodate their family. We would also continue to provide funding sources to support families with uniform access. We would also be analyzing data to compare the implementation of student uniforms to increase student academic proficiency. At North, we are focused always on academic proficiency and learning, but really, this project is about creating culture at our school. It's creating a sense of belonging, that we all are important, that we all have a voice, that we're all wanted here. So we have posters all over the school, and this is one way that we feel could help with that. After we do our one-year implementation, we would get feedback from families. We would have them fill out some more surveys. We would ask them, "What do you think? Did this work for your family, yes or no?" And based on that information, I would bring it back to you to say, "Okay, this was our feedback. Do you think we can continue this the next year?" So as I mentioned before, our school is really focused this year and past years on creating and sustaining a culture of belonging. So we can create it, but we also have to sustain it. And how are we going to do that? So approving the student uniform pilot is not just about clothes. It's about affirming our commitment to creating a culture at North where every student feels like they belong. Uniforms help promote equity among students, reduce distraction, and foster a shared sense of community and pride. By embracing this initiative, we will take a meaningful step towards strengthening unity, respect, and inclusivity across the North Middle School community. So tonight, I ask you to think about this, to think about the proposal based on the data that I've collected. And if you would be so inclined to approve this pilot, one-year pilot for us, to see how this would go, I would be very happy and thankful, and if so, we would get right on that to get the fashion show invites out tomorrow.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Sure.
Not to speak for the committee, but I fully support that, this pilot program, and hopefully my colleagues support this as well. And this is one of the, one of the things that the committee should take a deeper dive district-wide, not just in certain schools. Even at the high school level, I had the opportunity to visit Springfield and to see over 3,000 students all, not dressed the same, but just they had different categories of the clothing that they wear. But before I get to any of the questions, I'm going to go to Mrs. Oliver first. Mrs. Oliver, since you're remote, do you have any questions?
I have a question. First thing, great presentation. My only concern is the fact that once we start in North, then we're going to have to, probably other middle school would want to do the same thing. Have we spoken to the current students in there to see what they thought about the uniform being implemented? I just don't, if we're following the dress code, right, that we have in policy, I just don't want to take any, basically, their own personality, their own individual style, as long as they're passing their dressing appropriately to the policy that we already have implemented. And I don't want to take that away from our students, because they're all different. They're all, you know, individual. They express their style differently. I don't want to ever take that away from a child, especially a middle child, middle student. I just want to know if we have spoken to the current students to see what their thought processes of implementing uniforms in the school.
Yes, we have spoken to the students many times. We had recently a group of students, incoming grade six students, actually, who I met with yesterday, and they said to me, "Ms. Ramsey, do we have uniforms at North?" And I said, "Well, what do you think about uniforms?" And they said, "We love our uniforms." And I said, "Okay, well, stay tuned tomorrow night. Check out the school committee meeting. I don't know yet." So, yes, the students at North are very excited. Many of our students come from the Raymond and the George. They're familiar with wearing uniforms. They like it. They feel comfortable. So, yes, we have spoken with them.
So this will be like a one-year trial, just to see how everything goes, especially with the price, and see if family truly is able to afford this?
Yes, of course. My proposal is a one-year pilot program to see what parents and family and student feedback is, and based on that, I would come to you and ask for a more permanent policy.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Mr. Gomes, followed by Mrs. Azak.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
I also liked the idea. Mrs. Oliver did ask a question that I had. I know that parents did take a survey. I was wondering if students did the same to express how they felt about it. I know you did mention there's going to be funds available, and you guys can allocate funds for uniform. Is that sufficient to cover, let's say, we have, the needs that we have are greater than what we've anticipated?
Right.
Do we have enough to cover for all the...
Well, I will fight for, if this is something that we decide, because the whole point of this project is to make sure everyone feels included. So I will work to make sure we have grant funding. Whatever I need to do, I can go out and talk to our community partners to see. But currently, right now, I have commitment for at least one uniform shirt for each incoming North student, so 500 that will be able to fund through our cookbook.
Okay. I mean, I did wear a uniform when I was in school, not here, but back home.
Right.
And it was mandatory.
Right.
You had no option. But I will agree with you, it does promote safety. You can easily spot who's supposed to be here, who's not, and things like that. And also, it drives the attention away from, "Look what I got, look at my shoes," to, you know, "Let's focus on what really matters." So I am in support of this. I like the fact that you said it's, we're going to test it out. It's not mandatory.
Right.
You know, if you don't want to, you don't have to, to see how things will turn out. Also, I'll be looking forward to the data, you know, hopefully it passes. I'll be looking forward to the data as far as to what academics improvement we've seen since we've implemented the dress codes.
Yes. It's interesting that you say about you wearing student uniforms. So we have many students that come to us from other countries. Specifically, as you know, we've had an influx of Haitian students, and they say, "Do we wear student uniforms here?" And I say, "Not yet." And they say, "Oh, well, we love wearing student uniforms." So there are many cultures around the world that they wear uniforms, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Gomes. Mrs. Azak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Gomes had touched base on one of my comments. I love that it's a pilot program, because we're going to give them an opportunity to make that decision, or slowly, you know, if it's going to work out, give the families an opportunity to, if it does become mandatory the following school year, great. So I know sometimes we get a little bit of pushback when we ask for uniforms, but you did cover it, and I know we spoke before the meeting. A lot of families, it could be a financial burden, but I mean, I'm looking at the price list here, and these are really reasonable prices. list here, and these are really reasonable prices. You know, $15, $10, $7. So this is gonna probably help some families that they're trying to get the stylish outfits for the kids, so the kids can fit in. This makes it a little easier for students to not only feel like they're part of a team, all wearing similar things, but not also feel left out because they don't have the designer clothes either. So that I do like, and then the percentages, I don't, I mean, 94% as of spring of 2025. That says a lot. 94% of the families, grade seven and eight, were in support of this. So to me, I always base my vote on what the families want, and that's more than half. That's pretty much the majority. And that says a lot, that they're, they want this, they wanna support it. So, and the other thing that we did speak about, if you can just mention, I know other schools might do this as well, that have uniforms. If it is a financial burden, as your children grow out of, out of, you know, pants and tops, you know, they usually have nights where, you know, you have other families that you can
Swap.
Swap 'em.
Yep.
Which it makes it easier, is, is, 'cause the kids, some, some kids, different ages, there's growth spurts. So that does help some of the families.
Hundred percent.
So I'm in support of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey, nice presentation. I have a question and a comment. The question is, I'm looking for the khaki pants or the black pants, the price. I don't see it in, I see the sweatpants, but not the khakis.
Sure. So those would be purchased at either Walmart, or Amazon, or Target, and I did some research on that, and you can get four pairs of either khaki or black pants for $40. Each pair of pants is about $10. So depending upon how often people want to do their laundry would determine, you know, how many pairs of pants they would need.
The comment I had was, I was there when the old principal of the Raymond started the uniforms, and she, what she did was, she bought extra in case the student forgot to wear the shirt, they, they just didn't think of it, and they're walking out the door. So she had the shirts there available, all different sizes, and the pants, and, so they wouldn't look out of place.
Right.
And that was free for them. If somebody couldn't afford it, they got it free. Are you trying to do the same thing?
Yes, we're, we're current, I'm currently working, if this gets approved tonight, I already spoke with Cam, the grants manager, and if this is something that we decide that we're gonna move forward with, we'll be very aggressive with looking for various grants. As I mentioned, Title One is going to help us fund our closet, as you, you mentioned, that that's exactly what we're going, looking to do.
I'm 100% in support of it. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
And I really like the fact that you can tell who's not a student, because they don't have the uniform on. It's a perfect idea. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Vega?
First off, so shout out to me, I turned 50 this week. And, and among the gifts that I received was a North cookbook.
Oh, I love it.
For my family.
I love it.
So, so I'll be getting down, and I'll give an update every week of what I've made from that cookbook.
Very good.
So shout out to North on that, on that front. You mentioned an inclusive environment, right, like, and building that. What does that look like at North?
It looks like where every student has a voice, where every student feels comfortable to raise their hand and answer questions and take risks and make mistakes. It looks like everybody playing for the same team.
So as I, so I've had the opportunity to work in private schools and charter schools. I've had the opportunity to support public school programs. And, and so, I just wanna be clear, I 100% support North. I have some deep reservations about uniform policies. And, and here's where, where I go, right? Like, you know, so I've worked in private schools that had uniforms, and some private schools that didn't have uniforms. Those parents had a choice. I've worked in charter schools that had uniforms and didn't have uniforms, and those families had a choice. Public schools are the default. And so I approach this with a little bit of caution when we say that, you know, and I appreciate the fact that we have communities that are, you know, cultural communities that have that experience, and we also have a cultural community here in the United States of America that seems to want to put brown kids in uniforms. I'll just say that out loud. This is a concern I've had for a long time. A lot of times, uniform conversations, and I'm not saying this is where North is coming from. A lot of uniform conversations have to do with making sure that our kids fit in a mold. And I'm gonna say that loud, not proud, but I'm gonna say that loud, you know? And, and so I'm always concerned about uniforms when we talk about it at a district level. I can tell you right now, my two Brockton High graduates and my sophomore right now would not wanna be at Brockton High, and they are all in on being a boxer if, if they were told that this is now the district policy. So, so I have some reservations. I mean, and I also have some questions. When we talk about identifying a kid, any kid can wear a gray t-shirt or polo and khakis, but what any kid can't do is come in with a Brockton school ID. So I brought this up in some of the other school environments that I've been in. If every kid is wearing a Brockton ID, we know they belong in the school. 'Cause I, I agree, security is a paramount issue at our schools. And an ID is the only unique identifier, a gray shirt and khakis or not. A ID is the only unique identifier that lets folks know you're a part of the Brockton School community. You know, so, so I bring this up, you know, and again, I wanna be clear, I'm all in on North. You know, but I do wanna express that I have some grave reservations about any uniform policy coming into Brockton School System.
Thank you, Mrs. Vega. Any further comments or questions? What is the will of the committee?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the pilot plan for one year.
Motion is made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. This will be a roll call vote, because we have a member that is remote, Mrs. Oliver.
There is a message on the computer, I don't know if she stepped up or something.
Well, well, Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
No.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself, I am a yes. Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I, I, I support Mr., you know, Vega's comments on, you know, on, on brown children and, and so forth, but, you know, my vote tonight was to support the families that wanted this at North Middle School, and there's a lot of families, so our due diligence as committee members here is to support the families and the constituents that we represent. So I'm not putting my feelings on uniform policies. I wore a uniform from working at Good Samaritan, from working at a nursing home, to even wearing a law enforcement uniform for 24-plus years, and can't wait to take that off. Well, it is off temporarily, but permanently, so we will move on to the next item.
We'll actually move back to the first item, which I totally overlooked. I'm so sorry, I don't know why I moved straight to B and not to A. It was only when I sat in the audience that I was like,
Oh, okay.
The drama club is so interested in North uniforms. So my sincere apologies. So we are gonna move back to item A, which is the recognition of our Brockton High School Drama Club, our amazing drama club. And I'll pass along to
I wanted to give a special recognition to our drama club. I know, I believe I speak on behalf of this committee, the community, when I say they, they've been doing, and they did a phenomenal job recently, putting up a show for three nights here at our auditorium. I loved it. I know, I saw a few of you here, folks, and I know you had a good time, so you can't deny that. This recognition to the drama club, the directors, the volunteers, the staff, the band, everybody that contributed, that helped, that allowed these students to come here and showcase their talent to the students that, oh my goodness, I can't believe how talented you guys are, and I mean it. My cousin Cameron, oh, he's not here today. I never knew he could dance and sing, and to be able to have this opportunity to come here and see what you guys are capable of doing, and to see the people that are behind and helping make this come true is just amazing. And for that, congratulations and thank you. I'll just read this, 'cause, I mean, they wrote it after all. Thank you, Melinda. This is a certificate of recognition presented by the Brockton School Committee and the Brockton Public Schools to the Brockton High School Drama Club for their efforts in developing and executing a remarkable rendition of Bye Bye Birdie, building upon a well-earned reputation as an elite high school theater program that boosts the direction, acting, singing, choreography, lighting, and set design that are second to none. Congratulations. Should we do a picture? Can we do a picture?
Yes, yes. Quick, can we just take a quick, two-minute break, just to take a quick photo and?
Thank you all for your support of the theater program, too. Appreciate it. Thank you.
High School, but all of the arts at Brockton High School, and the arts in the Brockton Public Schools, because they really are a motivator, and they're a force to be reckoned with, and we are so proud. We did Bye Bye Birdie in five weeks, which, which was crazy and exciting all in the same breath. And right before Bye Bye Birdie, we competed with the Fabulous Fable Factory, which earned us a spot at the state finals as well. And I think everybody should know that Brockton has been at the state finals nine out of the past 10 years, which is which is the strongest urban representation anywhere in the state of Massachusetts. Not only is it the strongest representation, we are competing with, with communities that, that look at us and view us and say, we want to be like Brockton. And that is just an amazing thing to hear and be really proud of. And I've got a great team of adults that I work with, and an amazing group of kids that we get to work with every single day. So thank you all for your continued support of theater. Appreciate it.
Always, always, always. Our drama club is so important to us, you know, you know, we get kicked out of our meetings sometimes to give them space, you know? So we gotta make sure, you know? Not complaining, but, you know, this is, it's, it's, it's just a wonderful feeling of just sitting there and watching these amazing students and seeing where they're gonna be going and watching them on a big screen someday. So thank you for all the work that you guys do, it's wonderful.
You also, I appreciate that.
And the floor is yours.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I can't believe we're here at the final regular school committee meeting of the regular school year. It has been such a wonderful year. So to start, we have a long report today, because there's a lot happening in the district, a lot of amazing things. So first, I wanted to start with the fact that the communications department reports that BPS was recognized with a Silver Bell in the category of crisis communications from the PR Club of New England at its recent Bell Ringer Awards, which honor the very best in public relations work in the region over the last year. So BPS's communications department and BHS were honored for their efforts in correcting the record on some of the negativity around BHS in the media last winter through a sustained campaign highlighting all of the positive things happening here at BHS. The Silver Bell was the highest honor awarded in the category at this year's ceremony. Additionally, WBZ earned a New England Emmy Award for its in-depth coverage of the high school around that time, winning recognition in the education category for its multi-part long-form story, providing a more balanced look at life inside Brockton High School. Early last week, BPS hosted its annual Elementary Fitness Day, bringing together students from elementary schools across the district for a morning of fun, showing off their speed, strength, and most of all, their support of their classmates as they took part in a variety of races, ball-throwing events, and rope pulls. Later in the week, our middle school students got their own chance to do the same at Middle School Fitness Day. In the lead up to the annual Special Olympics Spring School Day Games, which happened at the end of May, I'd heard from numerous people that it's a day they look forward to every year, and it was very clear to me why student athletes from across the district came together with volunteers from Promise, BHS, and the community for an amazing day of races, friendly competition, and fun at the largest school-based Special Olympics event of its kind. I wanna thank all of the volunteers and staff who supported the event, and especially the special education and physical education departments for their extraordinary effort in making this terrific event happen year after year. We recently also had a chance to celebrate the outdoor learning spaces that were built at Hancock Elementary School through Brockton Kids Lead the Way, which is an initiative aimed at increasing environmental literacy and empowering stewardship among K-5 students and their teachers. This was the second of three outdoor learning spaces coming to Brockton Schools. The George School was the first, and our third will be coming to the Raymond this summer. These spaces are the product of a robust partnership among BPS, Manomet Life Sciences, and Wildlands Trust that includes providing teachers with lessons and activities that make the most of these extraordinary spaces. Thank you to Manomet and Wildlands Trust for their partnership in helping bring such incredible opportunities to our students. I also wanted to highlight the incredible work of the bilingual department, who have been assembling home bags for members of the BPS community who may find themselves facing housing insecurity. Thanks to grant funding and the dedicated efforts of our bilingual staff, we assembled duffel bags filled with a variety of essentials, like toiletries, but also air mattresses, pillows, blankets, and more that they, that may help those in need. The 100 Bags will soon be available at locations throughout the district, and we will post an update on our social media pages with information on how to get one while supplies last. Congratulations also to the BHS Multilingual Council, who delivered a keynote presentation about their club to a group of over 150 administrators from throughout Massachusetts. Their incredible presentation skills drew emotional responses from the experts in the room. They talked to educators and administrators about how to bring multicultural clubs to their own school districts. And for their hard work, the club earned the inaugural David Vallad Award for Community Engagement, and have set an example for students and districts across the Commonwealth. Congratulations also to the BHS Empower Yourself Drone Team, which placed third in the national finals last weekend at St. Anselm College. BHS finished two points shy of second place and four points shy of first, finishing behind peers from San Diego and what appears to be a budding rival at Belmont High School. BHS has appeared in back-to-back national finals of the Aero Robotics Competition. We are very proud of them and very excited to see how they build on this incredible early run of success. Members of the full IB diploma cohort at BHS undertook one of their first internal assessments recently, taking part in the Theory of Knowledge Exhibition. Students had a choice of prompts from which they had to answer using objects in an essay, which they then presented to the larger school community. Objects students have included letters, clothes, books, instruments, and even a globe, all of which students chose because it's something they have a connection to, and it helped them to illustrate their thinking about knowledge. Thank you to Giving the Glam for inviting a group of BPS students to a full day of pampering and prep for the senior prom at their venue in Natick. Giving the Glam is a terrific organization that connects with students who might not otherwise be able to fully enjoy prom, and provides them with everything they need, from a dress or tux, hairstyling, makeup, and a ride to the event, so that they can get the most out of the experience. Thank you again to Giving the Glam, as well as McKinne Vento Coordinator Shawna Gray, for helping make this opportunity a reality for our students. And it was a wonderful first prom for me to witness. It was amazing, and there were a lot, obviously, our BHS students, here are some of our champion students who attended prom at Gillette Stadium. Everyone looked great, and I do just wanna say that, in the same vein as what was just mentioned about folks actually looking at Brockton and wanting to be like us and complimenting us, the manager actually came over to me and mentioned that the Gillette staff always asks to work the Brockton Prom. Because our we got to have two incredibly inspiring graduation ceremonies on back-to-back days last weekend, celebrating BHS, Champion, BVLA, and the Therapeutic Day School. I was truly moved not only hearing the inspiring words of our educators and graduates, but also seeing the unbridled joy from our graduates and their loved ones as they achieved this major milestone in their lives. I'm so proud of all of our graduates and felt so honored to be able to share in this moment with all of them. I also want to thank all of the staff members who worked to coordinate these impressive events and helped them to go off smoothly. And that includes everyone from school leaders and teachers to their school police, custodians, administrative assistants, facilities, and so many others. The hours of preparation and all of the hard work truly paid off in these impressive events. And it would be impossible to highlight all of the wonderful end-of-year events that are happening all around the district, but I'm going to try. The Davis recently hosted its annual Day at the Davis and Multicultural Luncheon, which featured an unbelievable buffet of homemade dishes reflecting the diverse cultures and cuisines of the Davis student body. At South, students got to take an in-school field trip to do some fun and educational work with mad science, taking part in hands-on experiments right on their own turf. The Baker hosted a special cookout to celebrate the fifth-grade class. Students were treated to an incredible spread of cheeseburgers, hot dogs, and more, while cafeteria workers expressed how much they'd miss all of the students as they head on to middle school. The Kennedy recently welcomed the Student-Athlete Mentorship Group from the Red Building at BHS to speak about the sports they play, what they enjoy most about school, and what advice they would have offered to themselves when they were finishing fifth grade. At the Downey, staff and families celebrated this year's kindergarten class for completing their first year as ducks, which included what may be a record turnout for the annual K celebration. Promise celebrated its own culture day, giving students and staff the opportunity to bring a dish that was meaningful to them to share, as well as the opportunity to get outside and enjoy some time playing lawn games and socializing as the end of the school year approached. And BPS fourth and seventh-grade students got the chance to attend a Brockton Rocks game last week, where students from the Angelo were among those who got to meet the Rocks' newly-introduced mascot champ. Congratulations to our eighth-grade authors at the Ashfield, who are among the students whose short stories were chosen to be published in this year's edition of Fright Club. At the Kennedy, students showed off their knowledge at Habitat Day by presenting their homemade replicas of habitats reflecting the ocean, the desert, and the rainforest, and the research into animals who live in those habitats. After classroom lessons and hands-on practice, several BHS students completed their coursework to earn their CPR certifications. Thanks to our wellness education department and the Brockton Fire Department for helping to teach students this essential skill that could one day help to save a life. At the Barrett, they hosted a celebration in honor of all of the students who will be moving on to kindergarten next year. South's eighth graders were dressed to the nines as they enjoyed their semi-formal before officially moving on to ninth grade. Our AP and IB students were treated to some ice cream and a chance to connect about their achievements this year at a special Scoops for Scholars event that was made possible through generous donations from community partners and grant funding specifically designed to support the well-being of students. And finally, at the Hancock, students got to spend the day outside to celebrate their annual Husky Pride Day, which featured a variety of fun activities and games as the Hancock marked one week until summer break arrives. And really, there are so many more events that have happened and are still happening. It really is a great time in the Brockton Public Schools. And as we prepare for next school year, we are busy hiring, and I am excited to share with you some of the individuals who will be joining us either for the first time or entering a new role. So I'm pleased to share that Andre Galen has been appointed as the district's new Assistant Director of Transportation. He has extensive experience in the transportation field, including as a driver for Bruce Transportation and driver lead supervisor for DHL over a period of 13 years. He's also worked for First Student as a dispatcher, trainer, lot man, and lead supervisor, and most recently worked as a dispatcher for BPS's Transportation Department since transportation was brought in-house in 2022. He began in his new role earlier this month. I am also pleased to share that Kamal Peterson has been named as the district's new Director of Transportation. Mr. Peterson comes to BPS following a decade of work as the Director of Transportation for Grow Associates, where he oversaw all aspects of that organization's transportation program, including managing budgeting, staffing, scheduling, and making data-driven decisions to improve their operations. Mr. Peterson will begin his work at BPS on July 1. I am also pleased to announce that Kevin Rooney has been named as the new Principal of the Davis K-8 School. Mr. Rooney is returning to lead the Davis School, where he served as interim assistant principal in early 2023, after working for the last two school years as an assistant principal at Brockton High School. In his most recent role, Mr. Rooney was responsible for overseeing a school-wide climate and culture initiative that has resulted in measurable gains in student engagement and proficiency. Mr. Rooney first worked for BPS as a substitute teacher during the 2010-2011 school year and returned to the district full-time in 2013, working as a physical education teacher and later as a floor teacher before advancing into administration. He holds a bachelor's degree from Bridgewater State University, a master's degree, and a master's degree from Endicott College. Mr. Rooney will begin his new role this August ahead of the start of the 2025-2026 school year. And of course, we all know that he is replacing Darlene Campbell, who is one of our amazing retirees for this year. And last Friday, we actually gathered for the district's annual retirement celebration honoring staff members who will be departing the district at the conclusion of this year, following what was, for most of them, a lifetime of service to BPS. I mentioned on Friday that in all my years of working in school administration, this was the first time I'd seen an event like this, and it is a testament to the incredible community here in Brockton, as well as the immense dedication of so many educators and staff members who have given so much of themselves in support of our students. Thank you.
we have any questions or comments for the Superintendent at this time? Mrs. Oliver?
No questions.
Mr. Vega, floor is yours.
Before I get to my question, I just want to, you touched on something that made me think about something else in that, you know, we had the opportunity to be at the Champion, graduation, BVLA, therapeutic, and of course, Brockton High. And as we were talking about the accomplishments of our theater program, I just want to give a huge shout-out to our vocal program. Every event that I've intended, you know, to celebrate the commencement of, you know, and the success of our kids, has been incredibly augmented by the voices of our students. And I think, you know, year after year, as a parent, I've seen this happen. I've heard this happen. You know, we have very talented kids here in Brockton, vocal singers, and there is something that's being shaped at Brockton High that is entirely unique from anything that I've heard anywhere else. So shout-out to our vocal program. You mentioned the bag program. Are there ways that the community can support the program, help it grow?
That's actually a great question, and I will speak with the Director of Multilingual Education, Kelly Jones, and I'll see what she would suggest.
You know, when we look at programs like the prom with Glam, you know, again, I don't want to belabor a point, but you know, when I see a community coming together to make that happen, I recognize that when we talk about equity around how a student dresses at school, there exist opportunities to create those equities in other ways, you know? And this will be my last plug. I swear I won't do this anymore. How do I get down with the drone program? I'll be a cheerleader. I'll, yeah, I'll do whatever needs to be done. Drone program, if you hear me, I'm here for you. I'll do whatever needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, singing?
Just a quick statement. Thank you so much. As always, an amazing presentation. I know Mr. Mabelum, Jordan Mabelum, has been putting a lot on our social media. That's our key. The parents, the families, the students love to see this on social media. In our Brockton Public Schools Facebook pages and other sites that we have, I just, the more we do, the more we post, we got to, we got to, we got to post more of the positive because it outshines the negative. And we have some pretty amazing students out there. So I just, I've been watching, seeing a lot, and I just continue in even more. But I wanted to also recommend that I spoke with Mr. Mabelum, and I just said, we have a lot of programs, whether it's our students with the photography programs or kids that want to, you know, videography, things like that. Have them start covering some of the events and helping him because let them get involved. Let them start showcasing, because we got to get more visibility out there. Jordan's only one person. So there's a lot of events happening at our schools and stuff that we need all the coverage we can get. So I'd love to see if there's a way we can just get some students involved, just give them some extra credit of some sorts, but kind of intern with him and help him out throughout the year. I think that would be great. So I know I mentioned it, too, and we were going to look into it, see if there's any grants or anything out there to help them.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Item C is the Finance Update, and it's floor is yours, Superintendent.
Okay. So the first item was just a discussion of the FY26 budget, which we did. So just as a quick update, we did present it last night in front of city council, and I believe that their formal vote is on the 23rd. So they have two more evenings of budget presentations. But overall, I think it was, it did go well. I was able to connect with a lot of the city councilors ahead of the meeting to get any questions and to make sure they had their questions answered. And I certainly am available to them to answer any additional questions they may have in advance of the formal vote on the 23rd. So that's our FY26 budget update. The next item is the appointment of our BPS Chief Financial Officer. So I am very pleased to recommend Dr. Beth Regobuto, who is here this evening in the front row, as the new Chief Financial Officer or Assistant Superintendent of Finance for the Brockton Public Schools. Dr. Regobuto brings extensive leadership experience in both educational and financial administration that will make her an immediate asset for BPS. She is and has been serving as Superintendent of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District for the past eight years, where she managed a $19 million budget and led numerous state-recognized initiatives, including early college and innovation pathways programs. Prior to that, she spent over a decade in business leadership roles within Hamden Wilbraham Regional School District, working as Associate Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent for Business, overseeing that district's $45 million operating budget, and spearheading strategic financial planning and facilities projects. Dr. Regobuto is a licensed school finance official and has been recognized for her deep financial management skills with the John F. Conway Distinguished Service Award from the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, or MASBO, as well as the National Meritorious Budget Awards. She holds a doctorate degree in educational leadership from the University of Cumberland, a master's in organizational management from Endicott College, and a bachelor's degree in accounting from Central Connecticut State University. I want to thank this committee for their support during what has been a year-long search. And I would, of course, be remiss if I did not also thank interim CFO Trish Boyer, who is delaying her much-deserved retirement yet again in order to help us transition when Dr. Regobuto joins us this August.
Thank you. Does she want to say some words?
Um, yes, absolutely.
Floor is yours. Welcome aboard.
I definitely enjoy the role of being the school business official because it's less talking as opposed to more talking. But I did want to say, first of all, I'm super excited because my teaching experience was as a, I was actually a performing arts teacher for 30 years. So I'm super excited about any of the theater, voice, all of those types of programming. I'm looking forward to seeing every one of them, if possible. I wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Tahalini. I wanted to say thank you to the members of the school committee and the administration for helping me make this very difficult but important position change at this point in my life. I am really excited to get back to the roots of what I've always loved, which is the numbers and supporting students and families in any way possible. And I really ended up becoming a superintendent because I thought it was really important to know how best to provide a budget and financial outcomes because I knew exactly what was happening in the classroom. So I think this will be a wonderful mixture. I'm looking forward to helping the district with increasing collaboration with the city in transparency and for our taxpayers as well. So I'm happy to take any questions, but thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions from the members or comments? Mr. Vega?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say welcome aboard. I had the, you know, the honor of being able to interview you in the process. And what we're gaining is it's just, you know, it's just another strategic kind of piece in the puzzle. Yeah, I get very excited because I feel this year represents the year we'll look back on and say, this is where things turned around. And I think you're a piece of that puzzle. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. I was on the, I just wanted to say that I was on the interview team. And when you were being interviewed, I said, wow, she knows every angle of public education. She would be a great addition to the team. So thank you.
Oh, that's very nice. I appreciate it.
Mr. Gomes?
I was not on the interviewing team. But I trust my colleagues. They did an awesome job with our superintendent. So hopefully, this is another, you know, we capture a star. So welcome, welcome aboard.
I appreciate it. It's lovely to hear. It's very nice to have a welcoming set of faces around.
Mr. Sullivan?
I just, no questions, but just a comment. Welcome aboard. I met you at the beginning of this meeting. I think you'll be fabulous for this job. And thank you for coming. We needed somebody like you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I won't let you down.
Ms. Azak?
Well, since everyone's doing it, welcome aboard. Welcome to the City of Champions. You're going to love it here.
I think so.
Once you're, once you're here, you'll realize that Brockton Public Schools is a family. And we're always approachable. Anytime you need anything, you can always reach out to other committee members. So looking forward to working with you, and welcome to Brockton Public Schools.
Thank you very much. I feel the same way. So anytime you need me, I'm around.
Ms. Oliver?
Just one, quick statement. Just want to say welcome aboard, and hopefully, very soon I can meet you face-to-face and we can have a conversation. But definitely welcome to the City of Champion. We got a lot of work to do, but I appreciate it.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. My comment is really brief. It's through some storms and rough waters. The initial team and put in a lot of our faith and confidence in Dr. T. And we sat there and said, this is your show, this is your team, and you're building a phenomenal team. And thank you for that. So I couldn't miss some, some meetings and some negotiations because I'm very comfortable at this point. So, but what is the will of the committee?
Motion to approve the appointment of the Chief Financial Officer, and I apologize as a Beth Regobu-
Regobuto.
Regobuto.
Second. I was saying it wrong, too. Sorry. Regobuto.
Motion was made by Mrs. Azak, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. This will be a roll-call vote. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Approved. Welcome aboard.
So the next item of business is the approval of the BPS Chief Financial Officer title change to the Assistant Superintendent of Finance. I did include the job descriptions just to show that nothing is changing. It is only the title that's changing. The reason that I am requesting this title change is because this is more the industry standard in districts of our size to be the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, and it better reflects the leadership role and responsibilities of the position within the district's administrative structure. And in this case, it certainly better reflects the licensure and previous experience of our amazing candidate. So I was respectfully requesting to change the title, just the title, from Chief Financial Officer to Assistant Superintendent of Finance.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Will of the committee?
Motion to approve the title of BPS Chief Financial Officer, title to Assistant Superintendent of Finance.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Azak, properly seconded by Mr. Vega. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome aboard. All right, so the next is discussion and a potential vote regarding the school committee stipend, stipends. So in your budget book, I had increased the stipends to cover what has historically been expenses incurred by the school committee. And so that was a question that had come up. So I just wanted to bring that up since we hadn't officially discussed it. As you know, the cost of expenses has increased over time, the cost of the conferences and things like that. So in order to make it more equitable, I had just taken some money out of the conference lines and divided it up amongst the salary stipends, or the stipend line, sorry. So I just wanted to explain that, as that was a question that hadn't come up previously, but it did come up, which is why I wanted to bring it to this committee in the case that anybody had any additional questions or if there wanted to be a vote.
Any comments or questions by the members?
So the, I do.
Ms. Sullivan?
So I think it's decided by the city what we make. Did we get that checked out?
Yes, so I did clarify that. So the ordinance specifies salaries, but the stipend was what was cut, was, was meant to cover expenses. So that was determined by the committee. So the city council also has a stipend that has historically been in place in order to cover expenses, and that was what this was. And I'll be honest, when I was doing it, I didn't really understand the distinction either, so I apologize. And it has already been approved as part of this budget, but I did want to, since there was a question after the fact, wanted to do so in full transparency. So some of the, again, the overall bottom line is the same. It was that it was a redistribution of the conference expenses directly into your expense lines.
So the, the expenses, the committee should use the expenses for the conferences and, and things like that that they're going to that are outside of the city?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And so I think there would only need to be a vote if we wanted to transfer that money back out into the conference line because the vote, it's already, the budget has already been approved, so it would only be to transfer it back. And my apologies for not like highlighting this more clearly before. Again, I don't think I fully understood the distinctions.
Right.
Any other comments? So we don't need to vote on that anyway, so, because it's already voted on, so.
So it would stay the same?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And any further questions, please? I have gotten questions that have been emailed to me and stuff by city councilors. It was good for me to do the research and better understand it, so please, any additional questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, excuse me. I had a comment on the fiscal year, fiscal '26 budget, if I could. I know you, luckily you went through it, but you didn't give me a chance to ask questions.
Oh, sorry.
Just a comment, just a comment.
Sorry.
I've been here for a few years, and I said it to you last night, that that is the best book, budget book that I've ever seen. I mean, it was so thorough. I'm surprised you didn't give our addresses and phone numbers in the book. But anyway, it was a...
I did for the schools.
I was there, and I liked the way you handled all the questions that were fired at you from 11 different people. And I just wanted to say that I thought you handled it great. All the questions were answered perfectly, and you just did a great job. I was, I was really surprised. And the budget book itself was outstanding. I couldn't believe it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. No further questions. Mrs. Oliver, do you have a question?
No, I don't have any question. I do appreciate that Dr. T basically getting this to, to us and basically about understanding of exactly what the stipend is and what the yearly budget is. I do appreciate that he took the time to basically know more about it and exactly why we, the reason why. But I do appreciate all the work that's been happening, especially with the budget book. I think that's an incredible book. It's definitely something that we had never seen it. I mean, I'm a new school committee member, so I think this is something that the old school committee members has been asking for and demanding it, and I think we finally got it. And I do appreciate your time and work last night. So I just wanted to basically say kudos to all the work that you and your team has been doing to basically move the Brockton school system forward, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is the MSBA update monthly. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vega. Floor is yours. My apologies.
My apologies. And I had stepped out of the room when we hit the site in before. I just wanted to say publicly, I agree with my colleagues on what happened last night. And I think what needs to be highlighted is that I think what we saw last night was something that's been missing for a little while, which is you actively built a bridge of, a bridge of trust between the school committee and the city council. To hear our colleagues in the city council not just praise the work that you've done, but talk about who you are and their ability to know who you are and to put trust in who you are is a huge step. And I think it benefits not just the school committee and the city council, it benefits our kids, it benefits our families, it benefits the city. And so I appreciate, I've been a cheerleader, I've been Team Tahalini from the beginning, and I will go down in that camp. Thank you so much for what you brought to the table yesterday, superintendent.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Next item.
The next item of business is the MSBA update. I'm happy to provide it. I know normally the mayor provides it. We did, and, but please feel free, vice chair, to jump in at any point. We did have our first meeting here at the high school with our high school leadership, with our OPM and with the architects, KBA. They did a site visit just last week where they were able to walk the school. And so we are fully underway on schematic design. We have several meetings planned for the upcoming months, as well as, you know, a very strict calendar of events that we have to make sure we follow. But we do have left field, our OPM, who works, helps us through the process, make sure that we are doing everything we are supposed to be doing on our end, providing all of the information that we're supposed to be providing. But it was a great meeting, and it, it feels really real, so it's, it's exciting for us to be moving in this direction.
Just a, I mean, one of the key components is the gym space, which they toured. The pool as well, because that's not covered by the MSBA. The auditorium, they were impressed at the size. Maybe it can get a little bit bigger. And also, one of the key components is our planetarium. They were very impressed that, you know, that we have a planetarium. A lot of people don't realize that we have that. So the architect team will, you know, they'll be in here a lot more looking at the space and square footage and the programs that we have to make sure that a new or renovated high school is gonna sustain our student population. So it's getting there, and I know it's been a long time where we were getting shot down. And I'm very happy, and, you know, whoever's here on the committee, and hopefully that shovel can get on the ground. And Principal Mr. McCaskill will be over here overseeing some of this stuff and being happy. So you better put that retirement on hold, brother, so. So we will move on. Do we have any items to refer to subcommittee? Seeing none, we will go to the consent agenda. What is the will of the committee?
Motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. I will read. Item A is approval of minutes finance subcommittee meeting on May 13, 2025. Item B is approval of minutes regular school committee meeting, May 6, 2025. Item C, request for authorization of acceptance of proposed expenditures of funds. FY25 earmark for district-wide security improvements, $150,000. FY25 earmark for the Brockton Therapeutic Day School Security Invade Protectors improvements in the amount of $50,000. FY25 earmark for the improvements of the Davis tennis courts into basketball courts, $50,000. FY earmark for the Tom Ross Field fence upgrade at the Raymond School in the amount of $50,000. And FY26 funding for the civics learning and teaching grant in the amount of $48,000. And D is the acceptance of human resources notification, personal action, leave of absence, resignations, and retirements. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Vega?
Yes.
Mr. Vega, sorry about that. Ms. Azak? Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Next item is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Mr. Vega, the floor is yours.
So we had the opportunity to meet with school committee, city officials, and the Boys and Girls Club recently. That meeting left on a, you know, there were some challenging moments, but we left on, with some clear action items at the end of that meeting. And I know there's another meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and I'm just wondering, like, where we stand currently.
So we will be discussing with legal counsel. We're gonna actually try to schedule a site visit for all the members. There's some corrections that need to be relative to 150 to 250 square foot from, from Warren Ave. So we're gonna have the property laid out and everything marked so everybody can get a clear visual, and we'll go from there.
For sure. Is the, is the meeting still for tomorrow on?
No, no. Oh, we'll touch base on that, so I just want to make sure. I don't want to overspeak and to make sure that...
No, I, I...
Because I know some meetings have been canceled and vacation and all that.
My only concern is that, you know, is that we, when we set up these meetings, it's my understanding, partially enforced by AI, that, that when, you know, when we look at our school policies, you know, it's important that unofficial meetings, and when I say unofficial, I, I mean not public meetings, not executive session, those should come to vote. Who is in attendance at those meetings should be a vote. We've done it several times in my short time here. It should not be something that is simply, I select these folks. Every time we do a meeting that is not a public or an executive session, we should be voting on who is in attendance. And I think it's important because we may not all be of the same opinion. So it's important that when we select a group, whether, you know, we did this with the hiring of the superintendent, we've done this in other instances, that the selection should come before this committee, and there should be a vote on who is in attendance in the room. I say that very strongly because we do not all agree. That's not a bad thing. The voters didn't put us in here to all agree. Taxpayers didn't want us to all agree. But it's important that when we meet to discuss things, whether it's the boys and girls or other topics, that everyone in the room has been voted in by this committee to be present and represent the committee.
Thank you. Any other comments? I mean, it's the facilities, and the vice chair is the chair of that.
This was not a facilities meeting. This was a, this was, I just want to be clear, Chair.
I'm not trying to get into...
I'm just saying, this was not a subcommittee, which the vice chair does have all the ability to do. A committee of the whole vice chair. This was not that. This was a meeting between members of the school committee, the Boys and Girls Club, and members of the city departments. That is not a meeting that somehow doesn't involve a vote. I just want to be clear about that. I'm new, but I've learned, and I know what the policies are. And that was a meeting that should have come to a vote.
So the, the other piece is that that's on the will of the committee for a vote, that your...
When you, but it's on the vice chair to offer.
Just let me know when you speak, when you're done, and I can speak.
I think I'm being very clear.
You're done?
And I, I think it needs to be clear because a number of meetings have happened that should have gone to vote. I attended one recently, was told to stay in my lane and leave by you, vice chair.
Yes, I did.
That will not happen again because you had no jurisdiction to do so. There's nothing in our policies that says you can unilaterally dictate who's present or not present without a vote from this committee. You've sat here...
The reason why you weren't invited because you would have violated open meeting law by having...
Except I didn't.
Because a member didn't show up, but we can talk...
Because the mayor invited me because he used...
No, order to the floor, please.
No, I'm still talking. I'm still talking, sir.
I chair the meeting. The discussion's over. Thank you.
Sir, I've watched you, I've watched you ignore that gavel.
We're moving on. Unfinished business.
I've watched you ignore that gavel money time.
Do we have, do we, Mr. Vega?
I will say this publicly.
Do we have any, do we have any new business?
You do not represent me unless there's a vote. I will say that publicly once again. You do not represent me or anyone on this committee unless you have a vote. One time out of order, and you've been out of order wrecking the party.
You are out of order.
Again, you do not represent me or anyone on this committee unless there is a vote.
You are out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. So do we have? Yeah, thank you. You're making it out of order even more. Thank you. New business? Do we have any new business? Seeing none. School police lays on. Do we have representative? We're moving forward.
Can I make a final remark?
Nope, I'm, I'm chairing the meeting. Hold on. Mr. Officers, can you begin? That's the authority that I have as vice chair. Following the rules. Legal counsel's here. We can discuss this after.
Legal counsel's gonna tell you something we don't want to hear.
Please be respectful.
Good evening, school committee members.
Thank you, officer.
Vice Chair, Superintendent. Just a brief, no, nothing major going on. But we did have a successful graduation last Saturday. Both graduations were great, you know. Stadium was full of parents, staff. It was amazing, you know, to see all those kids graduate. We also, upcoming on June 28th, we have a PT test for the school police candidates coming up. Again, that's also gonna be a lot in attendance there, and that's at 8:30 in the morning at the Marciano Stadium. And wrapping up the year, and everyone's, hopefully has a good summer, all the kids, you know. It was a great year this year, so. But that's all we have so far. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the office? Mrs. Oliver?
No, I have something about new business, but I think you moved to a new topic, so I'm not sure where we're at.
Police lays on announcements. Thank you. That's been great so far. Nothing out of ordinary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Announcements? Just to Sullivan?
Just on the police. Could you give me the date again on that PT test? I know, did you say the 28th of June?
Yes, it's gonna be June 28th at 8:30 in the morning at Marciano Stadium.
Thank you.
Bring your running shoes, Mr. Sullivan. Any other announcements, Mrs. Azak?
I just, I just wanted to say something, but I don't know if, like, it was regarding new business, I wanted to mention something.
Go ahead, Mrs. Oliver.
Okay. Just a quick thing. I'm gonna be reaching out so I can do the first subcommittee on the mental health and well-being. So just wanna, whoever's on the subcommittee, just be aware, I'm gonna reach out so we can book one soon, so we can get that going, especially during the summer, so we can have everything together before the new school year. Also, I just wanted to, I know I've spoken to the superintendent regarding this matter, and I think somebody had spoken today regarding the band in elementary. I definitely do think that we need to figure out to find a better time so we can get more students in the band. And I know we're losing a lot of students due to the time there are due to participate. And I think that's one of the reasons why I did not have my son do instrument this year because of the hours. It's very inconvenient, especially for parents, to bring it during the day. And I think we really need to go back and figure out how we can go to do the old schedule so we don't lose the band program. It is a very essential, and I think the students gain so much out of it. My daughter's now going to band at the high school, and I think it's a gift to basically be able to play any instrument. I never was able to play instrument just because of the cost and the financial on my mom. But I think it's something that we really need to look at and figure out how we can bring it back to during the day so we can bring the band and we don't lose that, that one jewel that we have in the city, which is art and musical. So I think that's something we need to rediscover and see how we can change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Azak?
Thank you. I just wanted to, it's our last meeting as the students are leaving for the end of the year. So a lot of us are attending moving forward ceremonies, graduation ceremonies, whether it's kindergarten, eighth grade, high school. Just wanted to congratulate everyone. Stay safe. Have an amazing summer. And then to a lot of our retirees, superintendent, great job at the retirement event. Wishing everyone an amazing summer and congratulations on their retirement. As the superintendent had mentioned, we have some pretty amazing staff that have been here for 20, 30...